That's okay. Are we on?
Yes.
Are these on?
Yes.
So it is a couple of minutes past six, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the Town of Washington Planning Board. We do have a quorum present. So we'll start with Plaid of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lastly, if the members have received the minutes of the February meeting, which was our last meeting. They came just after the February meeting.
Remember looking at them when I was...
So are there any changes or corrections to those minutes?
No.
Can I get a motion to approve those minutes? Eric and Richard, all in favor? Second and one second, all in favor. Okay, so we have four new applications on offer workshops tonight. First is Raymond Goncalves, 3707 Route 44, and the applicant seeking a special use permit for a service business with the Mabbisville Hamlet Zone, within the Mabbisville Hamlet Zone. So is the applicant or is representative here? Why don't you come up and sit with us and talk? Say your name for the record, so that our secretary...
Ray Goncalves?
So why don't you explain to us what it is?
Okay, right now I'm directly across the street. I've been there for 14 years. Started a personal training business in 2010. And now I'm looking to, well, instead of rent, own my own building. So I'm looking to buy 20 of the building, so I could move my business into the building.
And what exactly do you mean? Just explain your building, your service business to us.
My services, one-on-one personal training and post rehabilitation, Pilates, massage. That's the bulk of it.
So I noticed that the plans, there was some talk about locating parking in the back of the building as well. Are you planning to move the parking? There is some parking currently in the front.
Yeah, I think it's kind of unsafe because it's too close to the road. I'm not sure it would be good with the state, so I have a couple.
The same?
Yeah.
We don't have a lot of parking where you are now. I mean, we don't really have.
No.
Out in front of that building now. It's 44. It's 44. He's kind of, yeah, now it's like black. They just paint it black, siding on it. This is a two-story building here, and it's parking out front now.
Put this on.
Yeah, it's currently, yeah. There's a lot of space there. It's been renovated. This building very recently. It's got a lot going on in front of it. Do you have a photograph of the building? There was a photo at some point somewhere. There was some...
I dropped a photo for each one?
Yeah.
I saw a photo.
We have the model here. Here it is.
All right, so that building is right next to William's as well?
Yeah.
Remember that? And it's, as a gym, it's gonna be convenient. People can pull right into the garage.
So you don't think that's enough parking in the front? It's like a lot of parking space for...
No, but also it could be a problem, I believe, with the state. People trying to back out. So I was thinking maybe doing two handicap, where they pull in this way instead of this way. So they're not trying to back out into the, you know, into 44.
That's what you're worried about, people backing out?
Yeah, and then it'd be better for the neighbors, you know, and if the parking wasn't more in the back.
So is the pavement back there where the yellow is? Where the yellow is, or is it stable?
It's grass now, so I figured I'd do like item four.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
And what is this?
That would be if we needed more, but that wouldn't be necessary.
Bob Audio owns all of this.
Correct.
So you're talking about the potential that you would park over here, okay?
Yeah. Hope that would be needed.
Are you gonna be renting it in the model or purchasing this building?
Purchasing.
So do you want to talk about any of the issues that we should be looking at?
Sure, so in terms of parking, since this unit is not specifically addressed in the course of our parking review, there is a home floor discretion, except for, I think there was the potential to have an apartment upstairs. There's an apartment, that has a minimum of two spaces. But other than that, it's based on the planning discretion or what what has worked, like, you know, the number of clients that you have now. Do you expect the clients, you know, to be about the same?
Uh, yeah, I mean...
The same number of people?
Yeah.
So then you probably have a good idea of the parking needs are.
Yes.
All right, so that was like the main thing that stuck out. Other than that, the other thing that we're covering is application to CCR. Was there any questions on that?
Just had a question of on the, on both sides of this. It's not commercial on both sides, is it?
Oh, that I don't know.
I'm just wondering if you take what is now a grass backyard and cut it back and put parking there. Whoever these neighbors are now looking at a parking lot where they were looking at green space. And I'm wondering if that, something could be done to to maybe shade it through trees on the side, something like that. I don't know if it's on this side. Does anybody know?
I think along this side, there are trees on this side. There's trees.
There's trees there. There's another building here. It's just been renovated as well. I'm not sure what the use is.
That's the address. 3707?
Well, to the left is the deli, right? Is the deli to the left?
Uh, no, it's another house.
Yeah, there's something between them. But that's what I'm thinking. I think this is residential. And I think it's a gentleman was fixing up the house. It's the one I'm thinking of.
Yeah.
It's been recently renovated.
Yes, and it's an old house.
Yeah.
Very attractive and renovated. So this is what I'm thinking, like, you know, for him to now have a parking lot as his neighbor. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want that.
So this is kind of the vicinity now. I don't have one.
Yeah, so it is the house I'm thinking of on the one side.
It's tricky about Mabbisville is because it's a mixed use area. You have to be really careful about not damaging the value of your neighbor's property or their enjoyment of their property by expanding the business. And automobiles, that could be disruptive to the residential areas right next to businesses.
Is the auto body shop right there? Yeah, I think so. Years ago, yeah.
But not often.
Right now, just directly across the street.
Can you go sweep you there?
700.
See, maybe I'll take a look that way.
Oh, I know. I thought you were on the one. Now I know.
Yeah, so I'm literally right across the street now.
What makes you think that this is gonna be an issue with parking with the state?
Just something that I heard.
Is it an issue for you right now? Because I know there's a number of people that park right in the front of the building, between the front of the building and 44, because I can't see often when I try to turn right or even left at that intersection, because cars are parked right there. Has that been a problem with them parking near 44?
I think so.
Yeah, do you want to see it? We got a picture here. So there's plenty of room to park in front.
It seems to be. And I understand it would maybe look better from the front if you didn't have a bunch of cars there and they were in the back. But for your neighbors in the back, that may not look so great. Somebody whose backyard wants this.
Is this here to the right? Right, so to the right of it is an empty lot.
Yeah, so this is, this is what the personal access.
Which is this, big house on the other side.
Yes, and this is the other house.
That's the, oh, that's the house.
No, no, there's two houses.
Yeah, I see it. I see it. I thought it was next door to him.
I always said a neighbor would be very happy.
But Alicia said, and I spoke to her about this.
Both of them, but they are screened.
Sort of a thing, there wouldn't be this kind of a service business. There's no allotted parking space. They have to have this apartment upstairs for rented for a person to live in, and they are required to have two spots if they keep that as a rent.
One other thing I know from parking that if they're moving to a parking lot...
See, because you could back up in there without going out to 44. There's plenty of room for that.
You have to go over soil erosion measures?
Yes.
That would be something that should be covered.
Are you gonna measure? So you need 40 feet, 50 feet to back up into
For that, okay.
And turn before you put your wheel in.
So where do we come out on this? I mean, I don't think anybody here has any problem with their service business in this building. I think that the idea of getting a special permit for that, I don't think is of sense. Great use of the building, love it. But the parking is where I think we run into a little trouble. Maybe if you could show us a plan, if you really intend on having parking back here. If you could show us something, maybe have a landscape architect draw how you would shake it in or, you know, so that your neighbors wouldn't even know it was there, that kind of thing. Maybe that would be helpful. Or potentially parking over here where you shaded it in. Is there a reason why you went back instead of over?
Well, I thought, you know, I thought it would be better for...
And you're proposing 16, you're proposing 16 parking spaces. That's a lot of training. I mean, that's more than you have now, right? More business than you do now.
Well, you figure if you have four people pulling in at the same time, four people leaving, because you're doing on the hour.
Right.
And then the staff calls.
Yeah.
So four, four, and four.
And you also have that apartment upstairs that needs two spots.
Yeah.
Yeah. But you're saying you're gonna use that for, Jim, you're not gonna rent that as a residential apartment. It says here you're gonna use it as part of the same business.
Yeah.
Oh, you would, okay.
Kind of like Pilates upstairs and massage.
Is parking the main concern for you?
I mean, if we can get away with it, I mean, if the clients can fit up front. And then if the staff park in the side or back, you know, something like that.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's another option is potentially just creating a few spots back here, less than you have, having some spot parking in the front.
22 feet in front of the building to the road.
And then you can see less being back out. Sort of shading out, steering from the neighbors.
And less traffic, less movement in and out of the back, if you have people, you know, working or coming in.
If you have, if you're this guy over here, having your barbecue, and every hour on the hour, this whole change happening, it's a lot of traffic. Even for a small business, you know, the changeover.
Is there any other parking? I mean, is the deli, that parking lot even available?
The deli's a real estate place now.
And it's two doors down.
There's nowhere to walk, so.
Susan?
Next to it doesn't work as well.
How would you feel about, how would you feel? How would you feel about cutting down?
This is Bob Audio. I'm the owner of the property, and my family is owning it.
Hold on one moment.
Intend parking spaces in the back rather than 16.
Yeah, and that could be done, and then...
Then you would have something like this.
That kind of solves it.
I don't see, they've been parking in the front for years, so I don't really see that as a problem. But Bob Audio was speaking on that. Bob?
Well, yes, I mean, my family's owned that building since 1947. And of course, it was our original car dealership for many, many, many years. And we did park out front, but of course, there was a lot less traffic on 44 in those days. And it was actually my recommendation to Ray to put the parking behind the building, because in reality, the only people that can actually see the cars would be someone going west on 44 and the neighbor to the east. And the neighbor to the east renovated the place kind of like a hobby. It's not, it's not lived in. He does have some little art shows once in a while in the big barn. And I used to let him use the field to park cars in, so I don't know if anybody's ever seen that. And the house to the east of the building is a we're pretty sure it's a short-term rental. No one lives there. There hasn't been a car, we can't get ahold of the lady that owns it. And, you know, to get an idea of what she's ever gonna do with it, but it's been empty for almost two years now. And, you know, the Hamlet in Mabbisville, even though it's, there's some residential, it was more of a commercial entity for many, many, many years. The house to the east, the big house, was Bob Eggleston's place, and they had a big antique sale barn in the back, which is the big barn in the back of the house. The house to the left was the Gally House, and that was a blacksmith shop when I was growing up. And the deli was a deli, of course, going back many years. So we just thought it was a better idea, I was talking with Ray, to put the cars behind. It, I thought it would just look better, and the front could be used for drop-off and things like that. But it just kind of made more sense to me. But it's, if you guys want to park out front, it's all done. It's been used for years for parking. And there's like 35 feet on the east side of the parking lot between that and the road and the fence, or the road line and the fence, and there's like 22 feet on the east side. So the west side has about 35 feet, and the east side is about 22 feet. But if you have questions, other questions, possibly I can answer some of them, walls and walls.
So while we were concerned about the neighbors to the east, if there were neighbors and if the parking would disturb, would be a, you know, like a sore, a sore spot for them or an eyesore for those neighbors. Can you tell us about that? That's the one you said that may be a short-term rental.
Nope, that's to the west, the yellow house to the west.
To the west?
Correct.
So what's to the east after a big open lot, you know, your property?
Okay, that's the old Lydia Dawe house, and that's a nice gentleman from Brian Beck bought the property at a foreclosure sale, and he's been renovating it for the last four or five years. And he tells me it's a hobby. He knows, Ray and I have both spoken to him, told him the intentions of the building, and I don't know if he's commented by mail or if he's online, but he had no issues with it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, well, if we have the public hearing, then he can come if he wants to make a statement.
I don't have any concerns about the special permit or any of that. I think it's really great use of that building. And I do think it's smart that you're thinking about additional parking, because that is only 22 feet clearance between the building and 44. And that really isn't quite enough to go all the way in and back out without getting probably car the vehicle on 44. So if you, if you're intent on doing that, I like your idea of maybe scaling it down to 10 spaces.
That's okay.
You know, because if it's four and four per hour, and there's that changeover, maybe a couple of staff cars, maybe there's one up front, I don't know. I don't know, if you could just maybe scale it down and then have a drawing of it, probably would be good for the public hearing next month, so that people could maybe visualize it a little bit better.
Yeah, especially a great idea.
Especially maybe with the photo showing that there is currently some screening between the neighbor that's very close to you on the west side, and then maybe, just so people could get an idea that, you know, and then it does make sense for the general area that the cars are tucked in the back. Maybe it's a better look, too, but it's also safer.
There are a lot of good reasons for doing what you did. When you enter, you exit, maybe if you're coming in and off the road and then leaving, it seems safer. I do agree with that. I'm just concerned with some screening for the neighbors and maybe scaling it back a little bit.
If you had some photos and maybe some kind of a sketch or, you know, a better way to for people to visualize it.
Okay.
And then what were the other requirements, soil? Yeah.
If you do this whole parking lot or even the scaled back version, you really have to give us a soil and sediment plan of some sort. We need to know that you're protecting the, you know, when you do this and there's a huge rain, that it doesn't flood the neighbors, or it doesn't, it has to be a certain soil and sediment plan.
Well, you said you're gonna put gravel in. That's not gonna be in it, paved, right?
Drainage and, an exonerator, Dave Young, said that we can tap into the street without, there, so we would have that drainage to tap into. That way we'd have, we wouldn't have a problem with the neighbors flooding.
You're planning on making that parking lot gravel?
This isn't the bad, we're talking about...
Because paving, paving, you get the runoff problems with capture that water.
No. Yeah, I think, well, you were talking about in the back here. Anyway, this would be, I think, if you were black topping an area right next to the road. But if you're, we're talking about this area back here, we just need to make sure that during the construction phase and afterward, that it just isn't flowing into your neighbors, that there's some sort of a, an engineer will know.
The engineer will take care of it.
Yeah. Anything else, Alicia?
May I, and by the way, I pause this for a couple minutes. I thought it was gonna be early in Joe area, Van de Water, but I think the rain made 44 a disaster. The other thing you might want to consider tonight, if you're gonna set the public hearing, is typing it.
We're gone, yes.
AKRF to type two, and that will allow you to revert out and set it.
Yes.
But other than that, we concur with the sort of conclusions and recommendations of AKRF and I think the various solutions that have been proposed tonight at all, within your discretion, clearly.
Great, okay. So yeah, so we're ready to do a secret vote, first of all. This is a type-two action, so it requires no environmental review, because it's reuse of a commercial building, that's why. So I need a motion to classify it as type-two. Eric?
Second.
Richard, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We also need to refer to the county, because the site is within 500 feet of the state road and an ag district. Okay, I get a motion to refer to the county.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So are we ready then to put it on for a public hearing for next month, which is May 7? I need a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we will see you next month. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want your, for you or for us?
I have so many active copies.
You know what, I'm gonna keep this one. I'll do that one.
What's exciting about your business?
Yeah, it is exciting.
Looking forward to it.
You know what, this is going to happen with the space that you're currently in?
Yes, I'm in, not sure, but the landlord that I have now, actually, I spoke with him yesterday. You know, I said I'm doing like, take it easy. He's been doing, I think he's doing pretty well getting rentals in there.
Yeah, he just recited the building and everything.
Yeah. And then he's doing a fantastic job.
And then the sun hit it, the siding got all damaged, that was why.
They used the wrong paint.
Yeah. Yeah, just, just really dark pink, iron house, and he had brought the special color that doesn't do that. And so we were just feeling like, oh my God, I'm gonna tell you. We drove by and we saw that, we knew exactly what it was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, see you next time.
Dr. Hammond's voice that we're gonna use today.
No, no, that was such a shame. Okay, the next matter is Robert and Mary Hurley, 199 Milewood Road. It's an application for site plan approval to replace and expand screened-in porch at a private residence. The ZBI has already granted them a cost invariances and a special permit, and that's conditioned on the planning work giving site plan approval. And that's required, because they're increasing the size of a non-conforming structure by more than 25%. Hello?
Hello.
Can you say your name for that?
Sure, hi, I'm Michael Sloan from Sloan Architects. Do I mean the Hurleys?
That one, to explain the application.
So there is, the house actually has a, had an existing screened-in porch. It's just a little too small for family gathering. So this project is removing the existing screened-in porch, which is right here where I'm at, on my fingers, and kind of tripling the size by going this way with the porch. The the porch itself is, existing porch, and again, this porch will be, is up on posts, because the house is on a site that's sloping down. A gentle slopes to the back, just to behind the porch, and then it dramatically slopes all the way down to a gavernal pool that's about 165 feet away. Our office actually went out and measured that distance physically. The the constraints of this, this property, which is why we went to the ZBI, is it is not, it's a regular-shaped property where the neighboring lot comes into a point that's 35.9 feet away from over the proposed porch is. But this, as again, their house is quite a distance over here. And this, this is a giant hill that's going from top of Milewood Road all the way down to the bottom of it. So it's a consistent hill through all the neighboring lots. So the house is not conforming because of the, this is the only kind of flat spot on the property to begin with, as you can see the contours get dramatic as you go away from the original house. But back in the, I believe in the mid-'80s. The, so the project, the porch is designed so that because of the constraint of the existing house and property, the elevation, so you can get a better, I see. It also provides kind of a minimum impact on the on the property. It's, it's gonna be completely open underneath the screened-in porch, so that, you know, on maintenance and people getting to the access can actually, because of the drop-off, it's happened so closely, they need to be able to get the one more
Wow.
through underneath and then onwards. So the actual disturbance for building this is actually pretty minimum, because we're really just building piers to support the porch. The other aspect of it is, the existing porch is kind of like your traditional two-by-fours with wood screen kind of nailed to it. It's very kind of 1970s, '80s, no aesthetics to it. Functional, yes. But this whole house, our office actually beautified the whole house several years ago, putting on more architectural trimwork and features to kind of bring the house up to what it, you know, full potential. And now we're doing that with the, we did that with the main house and facade. Now we're doing beautifying the porch, too, so this is not a...
So originally, just let me, did you have to go through the ZBI for that renovation, when you did that?
No, this was just like trim.
Okay, it wasn't any addition, right?
There's no addition or anything.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that was interior fixing up space.
Got it.
It's nothing to do with adding one or anything. We didn't increase the footprint or anything. The but this is where I was saying, open for lawnmower equipment that can drive through. It's a very classical design in keeping with now what the best the house looks like. And one of the things about the site is, because of that, gavernal pool is on, you know, 165 feet away in the woods. It's very dense woods, it's even behind the house. It's very muddy, so the screen, sitting out on your, some patio you'd use a lot, of course. Not this time of year, but obviously. The other aspects of the project include a retaining wall that's obviously do make the transition from this, this level, which is, this is kind of existing, kind of a little back garden area. We're cleaning it up, but there is a stone path that runs into existing wood stairs that are right here already. We're, we're cleaning it up, uh, but there is a stone path that runs into existing wood stairs that are right here already, that brings them to the porch. Um, but there's not really much changes there. The, um, in terms of the site plan, based on, um, the ZBA's, um, zoning board, um, the engineers review, we did add, um, construction consultation, um, erosion notes. So for construction, because of the hill and digging the, the footings for the screened-in porch and the retaining wall, we have a self-fence here, and if there's any stockpile, the detail for the contractor to have, um, actually, the stockpile would probably be over here, because it probably comes like this, how to contain it, so those soil goes down the hillside. Um, that's pretty much about it.
Alicia, any comments?
Um, I mean, not really. Most, most of our comments were addressed during the, the ZBA's review. So, uh, yeah, the main one was just about having that self-fence, that's what they're now, and then we don't have standard type of new one.
Mm-hmm, okay. More comments?
Yeah, I have a question, because there's a gavernal pool there, wh- when are we proposing to do construction? Because there's certain times of the year that those pools are more sensitive, um, nurseries for salamanders, all of that, so is there sort of a timing, a plan?
Um, um, not when, like, right now, you know, um, gavernal pools are very active right now, you can salamanders and everything. So it would not be, it would be more towards summer and fall, which, they're less active, we'll call it.
So is adding a screened porch considered additional square footage of the living?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay.
Um, yeah, so as soon as you put a roof over it, so again, in fact, it's not, but as soon as you put a roof over it, it is.
No, I would've thought it had to be sort of finished space, I mean, you know that, like.
Yeah, it's the roof that does it.
It's the roof that does it. Yeah, because it's the kitchen that does the other things. Okay, I wanna real to add that in when they're telling you how much square footage.
It's kind of funny, because like, you know, but I just don't count, we've had a, it's being important stuff.
Is it because it continues, like, it continues on from the house?
I think it's because they look at it as it could be finished later.
Okay, you could add walls.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
You wouldn't need a variance rate if there wasn't a roof on it.
I mean, I think you might still.
You, 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 you need an, you need an area variance, you wouldn't, um, where it gets you is, in a non-conforming lot, when you start exceeding that percentage that you're allowed from the original production, twenty-four percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there is another interesting thing, this house, I'm not sure when the CO was, because it, I just learned this from the ZBA on another project in town of Washington. The house was added on to, uh, built prior to that nineteen eighty-seven fall day.
Yep.
You know, you, you use a different number.
Setbacks for different.
Yeah.
I have that situation where I live.
Yeah.
The setbacks are different, so.
But if the house is built after nineteen eighty-seven, or August, or whatever day it is, then you, um, it's more restricted.
Yeah, and setbacks increased a lot in eighty-seven, yeah. From, as, a lot of the rezoning, there was five acres zoning, became ten acres zoning, and the setbacks increased.
But I didn't realize you went back to those old setbacks to use if you wanted to.
It's not that, it's the percent you're allowed to increase.
Oh, change.
That's what changes.
So like, adding a porch on the, how much percent, what does that, something increase?
Yeah, this is in the front page.
It's eight hundred feet, and it's thirty-two hundred square feet now, so.
Was it thirty-five percent or something?
We had a twenty-three percent.
Twenty-three, well.
Yeah, very good.
Within the, so the special permit, actually do that twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
It was in that.
Oh, I thought it was more than that. Okay, easy. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, uh, so again, this is a type-two action, requiring no secret, uh, review. Uh, can I get a motion to classify it as type-two?
Second. This could be very easy, this.
Seconded by Richard, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Okay, I did forget to ask this on the last file, but, um, Kim, is the file complete? Yes, one, okay.
All of those are complete.
Okay, great. Uh, so can I get a motion to put this on for public hearing? You ready to come back in front?
Yeah, I was gonna ask if there's any possibility waiving a public hearing, because we went for a public hearing with, for this, for ZBA, and not one person was, neighbor was interested. I mean, we met with the neighbor, um, and they, no issues. It's just that there's.
Can we do that?
You, you can do it, you have the discretion to do it. Your code doesn't require a public hearing for special, for site plan, and the state law, the state town law does have provisions for how you conduct a public hearing, if you require one, and it doesn't prevent you from requiring one, but if you don't require one in your code, you're allowed to waive it.
But that doesn't help me.
So that means yes.
It means yes, you can. I just mentioned it because I know it's been your practice to do that, and there's nothing wrong with that practice, I didn't want you to think there's any reason. But, you know, not to continue that practice in general, but where you think the circumstances in your discretion merit it, you can.
I think these circumstances would allow us to waive the public hearing, because there's already been a public hearing on this issue.
Right.
It just was just a site.
And we mailed out all the notifications to all the neighbors.
So like it was six months ago, or, you know, like a new neighbor might have moved in.
When was that public hearing? January?
It was February twentieth.
February, yeah.
I would go along with that.
That's my, no, I would, I would go along with that. I agree.
I'm happy to do everybody's.
Motion to waive the public hearing.
Seconded? Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
If you're comfortable with this.
What are you hesitating about? Uh, I'm not, I'm not hesitating, because I'm not comfortable with it, I just, I'm, I'm foreseeing, um, I'm foreseeing letters.
Yeah.
It's, I, I understand that it's minimal, but I'm foreseeing the letters, because it's a hundred and sixty-five feet from the wetlands.
From the wetlands.
So I'm wondering if it might actually be beneficial to the project to not waive the public hearing, even if nobody shows up.
But they had a public hearing, and they didn't come, and also.
It's a hundred and sixty-five feet from the buffer, or is it just from?
You can understand what I'm.
I'm, I'm.
Yeah. I'm not concerned.
It's beyond the buffer, yeah, okay.
I'm happy to learn about that in this.
So the buffer has been delineated, or you know what?
Just to see what we get, and to allow people to have a chance to say something, but they just had a public notification and a hearing on the twentieth of February.
Yeah.
I, I, that, that, that was what my hesitation was, is the, it's not my concern about the project.
So, so I think there's an expectation that there is a public hearing. Right, so, I mean, if there is someone that might have some least objective, or the expectation might be that there is, but I'm not suggesting there is.
If there was, or if there was, that they didn't show up, that.
I, I understand.
I mean, the only, the, I mean, the only difference, I guess, is the, is that we are expected to deal with the wetlands issue. That's, that's to me the distinction.
Let's have the public hearing.
You're not, you're not planning construction till later in the summer.
Because I'm.
You said that based on the gavernal pond, so is there, was this inconvenience in any way? Well, why did you suggest we do it later?
Um, it's, it's expensive, the owner, me coming here every time, and, and ZBA was absolutely, went flawlessly, there's no comments, and
There's no one.
And I met with the neighbor, so, um.
Um, the CAC has a comment?
Well, they normally talk at the public hearing, this is the gavernal pool, and I don't know exactly what they have to say, but we normally talk about, gavernal pools are pretty special.
Did you, did you comment?
Did you attend the public hearing previously on this matter?
Normally, when gavernal pools are involved, we take a closer look at it, it's.
But I'm saying they already had a public hearing, were you adding?
We didn't talk in that public hearing.
But did, did the CAC go attend, I guess what Susan's asking, did, did the CAC represent the attend?
I was there, but I'm not representing the whole CAC with the total, because it was in the, in between CAC meetings. So officially, the CAC didn't have a chance to talk about it yet.
Mm-hmm.
Because they occurred between CAC meetings, I think it was the twentieth, I'm not sure of the date.
It's the twenty-seventh of February.
So, that, that's prior, as after the last CAC meeting and before the present CAC meeting, and so, yeah, the members haven't had a chance to weigh in on it yet, because it didn't meet until tomorrow. You know, assuming that this was a workshop especially, and therefore, the public meeting would be the meeting after this, where we could submit information to you if we needed to.
What do you think?
We should have a public hearing.
Okay, that's, that's still, I don't, but it, that's what we all vote.
I mean, my, my concern is if we don't have a public hearing, we're gonna end up, we're gonna end up dealing with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that it could delay the project.
That is, that's what, that's my point, it's gonna end up delaying the project, and putting a spin on it, that's not.
Be better for your clients, but, but just do it. Yeah, okay, so we're going to strike our last vote. Are we gonna take it? And, um, now we'll need a motion to schedule a public hearing for next month. Emily? Seconded?
Second.
Richard, all in favor?
Aye. Okay, thanks.
So good.
Oh, so good.
One screen.
Sorry, I just think.
We may wanna see where that sheet says we have, or have, or that says that we may.
When you said that, I was thinking about, we have.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
I've done the last two years.
Many times since I've been on the work.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks, good night. See you in a month. Okay, the next matter is Christie and Milco, Milco, fifty-five Deheim Road, and this is an application for site plan approval to expand and renovate a single-family home. The ZBA has already granted their variances and special permit condition on our site plan approval. Their applicant, hi.
Hi, my name is Amel Zivern, Milco Architect. And.
I'm Chrissy.
Chrissy, Milco, owner.
Hello.
Um, I have drawings on a board, would you rather me lay them out?
Yeah, yeah. They're flat? Whichever you'd smoke. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
Okay, this first page is, is basically just a picture of, obviously, the area map, location map, and a rendering of the exterior of the proposed renovations to the house. Next couple pages, if you want, I can go through them, or we can go back to them, it's existing, existing floor plans.
Mm-hmm.
For residents. The elevations of the residents. Hold on, so the existing house, I'm not sure how many are familiar with the house. Just stop me if you.
It's good repression for us.
It is good, yeah.
We looked at your application, but we look at a lot of them, so it helps us to start off this way, yeah.
Existing site plan, which is existing site data. And S-two, which is the, uh, the newest site plan, which, um, I believe we addressed the latest, um, engineering comments on this sheet here, which I believe the planning board, they probably got copies of all of it, I think, right?
I believe so, yeah, um, to us, and, so, yeah, the latest one, I think, I think you can send out, but I think there were two or three.
Justice after now, right? I don't want to follow right now, so. We got that today, right?
There's only kind of a few items on there, which I have, I have a list, if we can go through it if you'd like. Um, so basically, what we're doing here is, um, as you can see on here, this kind of white shaded color area is the existing house.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, basically, we're proposing, this is, um, an expansion of the existing kitchen dining area, and this is a screened porch. This is a, uh, on the first level, it's like a study with a mudroom. On the second story, there's a, um, master bathroom getting increased from the existing one, and like a little study off of the, uh, master bedroom. Um, we're basically increasing the size of the existing front porch, just a few feet, and that's a new chimney, which right now is inside the house, so make it a bit more efficient for bedrooms and the, uh, finished floor area, we're basically bumping to the outside. So a month or so ago, we went and got variances from the ZBA for all of this, they had separate variance for each one of these items.
Because of, um, non-conforming lots, set, setback.
Yeah, we hear basically, Chris, yeah, the whole house is within the hundred-foot setback, so that triggered, so no matter where we build, in addition, we'd have to go in front of the zoning board.
But was that also at the twentieth, February twentieth meeting?
Yep. And basically, we're adding a hundred and thirty-nine square feet, I believe that exact number is, uh, to the existing residence.
How much?
It says eight thirty-nine here.
Eight hundred and thirty-nine.
Oh, you said a hundred and thirty-nine.
Oh, no, eight thirty-nine.
Looked like a hundred and thirty.
I'm gonna do some of the old site plans. This is the, uh, the renovation, as I've mentioned before, uh, the light area is the existing residence. This is the expansion of the kitchen and screened porch, study, the mudroom, and the expansion to the front entry. One of the reasons we're doing this is, uh, that's the existing kitchen, it's a, the house has very low ceilings, it's like seven-two, I believe.
Hmm.
So we're, we're also, as we increase the size here for this, we're actually gonna raise the ceiling in house where we, where we can, just to get additional height. The second floor, we're doing the same, then this is the most part of the existing second floor. We're not adding square footage here, but we're raising the walls up to get ceiling height, because I believe it's like three-foot slopes up. So we're just raising it up to like seven-foot-two, if I'm not mistaken. And then we're adding, um, additional square footage to the bedroom, that's back here right now. And that's the sitting room off the master bedroom, and the original bathroom was over here, we're just moving it, and just trying to give it a little more space with the walk-in closet.
What we, what, what year was the house originally built in? Uh, I don't really know.
Here's like the early, I think, I wanna say like the ninth, like from like from ten, so, right now, it's, it's already been increased in size from what it was originally, there was an addition in the mid-eighties.
Just unusual to have seven-foot-two ceilings at, at any point.
It's really, yeah, the ceiling's very low.
We wish we could raise the whole first floor up, but at least we're getting second floor and some of the living area downstairs. And that's basically the elevations, the new front elevation.
Looks nice.
Front, side, back.
Yeah, it's gonna be great.
Very glad. So, as you're aware, we're here because it's part of the requirement to the ZBA to get a special permit for approvals. Um, anybody has any questions on anything?
There's no wetlands nearby, right?
No, there's several hundred, a couple hundred feet backwards of the property.
There are a lot of wetlands in that area, but the whole house is not. All the other houses, our, our property does border the, the wetlands, but yeah, the house is kind of like far back, all the way on the other side of the property.
Yeah, this is a, um, two hundred feet from the wetland, and you can see this is where the existing house is, so it's three hundred and fifty
It's far.
Feet, plus my four feet.
That's on the north side of the road. Yes, the north side.
Yeah, it's really nice.
Yeah.
Thank you. So hopefully, we can get approvals. The board, I don't know if you wanna go through your, the letter that they wrote it on?
Alicia will highlight it.
Oh, you have it there?
Okay. Look at.
Well, just wanna mention that a couple of our comments were, as I was already, with the additional position, um, the site plan, as you can see, the most recent one. And admitting, uh, photo.
What about the five hundred-foot county road issue?
Right, so that was a question, because on the Dentist County Referral Identifier, it said that the property is within five hundred feet of, I think, of farm operation. But then, uh, speaking with the applicant, he said, actually, it's more than that, and provided documentation, it was, it was like over six hundred?
Six hundred and ten, yeah.
Six hundred and ten, and I actually did the.
Is that from, is on Bangor Road? The one, or where, where is?
Mabbetso.
Hitchcock, yeah. Not Hitchcock, but, um.
Oh, you mean the, the, yes, that, that, um, yeah, that's farther than even Mabbetso.
Parcel access, you can measure it on that.
It's really just.
You can measure it on parcel access.
Yeah, I did it in parcel access, and actually, I, I just resubmitted, I'm not sure why the board, they seem like they didn't have it, the, um, new location map.
Yeah, see.
That one to two hundred, even when I, I scaled that so many times to verify, this one's four or five, this one's this, and I put the skip, and I still came up with almost about six hundred feet to Mabbetso Road.
So is that acceptable to us, a, a Google map type of a thing like this?
It might be personally.
Well, parcel access is pretty long, within ten, fifteen feet is accurate.
And I actually, I used an app, I specifically was looking for, it's, I don't know, it's like the farmers use to sort of like parcel out their properties, because they thought it would be more accurate than just Google Maps, so anyway, that's where the picture came from, but it's based on Google Maps, so. than just Google Maps, so anyway, that's where the picture came from, but it's based on Google Maps, so.
Okay.
It was just barely even by the Dutchess, the Dutchess County Referral Identifier, it was just barely at five hundred. So, if the applicant showing that their measurements show over six hundred, I'd be comfortable.
Yeah.
Like I was saying, it does sufficient justice.
Yeah, I'd be more concerned if we're five-twenty to five-thirty.
Exactly, something on that.
She come up with a number, I come up with a number. Like I said, I was almost six, she was just under, that is over six, I was just under six.
Anything else?
Wetlands on site, but it's several hundred feet away, right?
Yes. And the soil control, sufficient soil erosion control measures, is that been addressed?
We don't show a silt fence on this right now, we're doing most of it pretty flat.
I thought I saw something about that, maybe I meant something, so. I might be fixing that with another one. That's probably what I did. Yeah, probably missed. That's the last one.
That's probably one.
Okay. Anyone on the board have any comments, questions?
It's like deja vu. I mean, not that the board, this really matters, I mean, we've been, we're behind schedule, and it's rather awful, but probably, we had a snow delay on the zoning board meeting, and every month this goes by and by. And I know the town, I believe the board can, as we also mentioned, can wait a public hearing. We did have a public hearing a month ago also. Nobody showed up at all, and we feel that if somebody's gonna fight this project, they would've came to the ZBA to stop us from getting variance before, you know, coming to a public hearing, to the planning board. So, we're just asking, is it possible?
It's the same process, right? All the neighbors are notified, it's the same.
I don't have a problem with this.
How large is your parcel again?
Seven, just over seven acres?
And the neighbors on either side are on larger parcels too?
Uh, I'm not sure about the person, like, if you're looking at the house on the road, I'm not sure about the parcel on the right, I think it's smaller. Um, and, but Bill, Ray Miller's proper on the property on the left, I think he has like twelve acres.
Yeah, the ones to the left is, like you're said, the ones to the left according to the parcel map, is seven-point-one.
Ow, oh.
According to this.
Oh, I thought those was-
Yours is seven, and then the one to the right is twelve-point-three.
Oh, those is like, yeah, up the hill, yeah.
And this is all in ten acres on it.
Yeah, correct, so multiple, multiple lots here, seven-point-nine, seven acres, seven acres, this one's twelve.
The one that's twelve, that's to the east, is that the house, that's a yellow house?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't have a problem waiting in the public hearing on this.
And have you spoken to that neighbor, to that neighbor?
Yes, actually, we, yeah, we've spoken to her, yeah.
Okay.
Um, she, um, she spoke to my husband, and she actually said, she's like, oh, I was gonna go to the public hearing for the zoning board, she's like, but it looks like it's a great project, and so she was fine with that. So, which, I was surprised, because we don't really talk to her that much, you know, she's not, we don't have negative relations with her, but that was a very positive interaction in our, in our opinion, so, um, that was kind of a good thing.
And no one came to the public hearing on February twentieth?
Nobody came, no, not even no letter or anything.
There was a letter submitted, yeah. Okay, and there's no wetlands involved? No.
We have to do secret, though.
Yeah. So, first is, again, it's type-two action requiring no environmental review, can I get a motion to classify it as type-two?
Motion.
Seconded? Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Not ruins. Try and end that. Are you in your car?
It looks like it was in his car.
Um, so Kim, is this file complete?
This one is not.
Okay, what do we need?
This has, has to do with variances?
I mean, absolutely, no, escrow.
Outside of escrow, okay. Oh, okay. And is that the bottom line, balance due, so there is a balance due? So we really, I mean, we can put, we can do this, but we need-
Can I write you a check right now?
Is this paid by check or by, not by regular check, yeah?
Okay, and can you tell me what the-
And balance due is nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. Okay, 'cause I really can't put it on for public hearing with money's owed. So, she's saying you have that, so can I get a motion to schedule a public hearing? I mean, to waive the public hearing? So, okay. And seconded? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we need this check now, if we're going to approve this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Still not seen, can I have that?
So, if we waive the public hearing, and we want to approve, do we need a resolution of approval? What will we, Joe, what will we do for that?
Well, if you, you can certainly authorize the draft, but it's a consideration, obviously. Can't necessarily tell yet whether that'll be your plan of that night, but it makes sense to authorize preparation.
Okay, so we're not, we can't approve it as a whole tonight, then?
No, I, no? Well, you told you usually would give the approval tonight, and then they write the resolution giving the approval based on what was submitted.
I guess you're waiting.
That's what, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can have a motion to approve this special permit, not special, a site plan approval, and then you will write up a resolution afterwards, that effect, okay?
I'm just have to file a plan? File a plan, just to file a site plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Something that we have to sign.
Yeah, I can give that to you tonight, if it's okay, and that's, two copies?
I don't, Kim, how many copies of the site plan, do you remember?
Site plan for-
For signatures?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, it might be-
Is that how many we have to have in the body?
Yeah, 'cause it's worth-
Yep. I might have four tonight. 'Cause I know I have one here, and I know the applicant signed, she might just have to sign one more, if it's okay. You wanna continue on, I can just hand it to the secretary.
Yeah.
Maybe we can do the resolution, we can do the resolution outside of a public, outside of the meeting.
Say that again?
How will we execute this?
So we'll do this approval here, and then you are gonna write up a resolution, and then what happens with that resolution?
Well, you, as part of your motion tonight, you want to approve it tonight, you can authorize the chair to sign that. You know, subject to our preparation.
Yeah.
No, really, alright.
That's fine, okay.
Susan, you're good.
So, can we first get a motion to approve the site plan?
Motion to approve the site plan.
And seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, do we need a motion for this? Why I always authorizing?
Yeah, authorizing you to sign, subject to receipt of the resolution.
So, can I get a motion to authorize me to sign the resolution? We'll be prepared by-
So moved.
A second.
Make it so complicated.
Who first did?
I did.
Okay.
I've been writing them all, so.
You'll take the first.
Okay. So, that was Emily and Nicole.
You didn't quote the votes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you're all set.
We're good, now, like I said, if I'll just take two minutes, I'll see if I got the four copies.
And wait them with Kim, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay, get your hair swing tomorrow. Get your hair swing tomorrow.
Yeah, it's easy tonight, tomorrow I'm flying.
Yes, get your hair swing tomorrow, I mean, next week. That's exciting, it's gonna be okay.
And is this also a special permit application?
No, we got one, the ZBA.
But the ZBA did that, so we'd have to read about that, right?
Yes. I was just just site plan approval.
Yeah, good, okay.
Alright, you're set.
Good, thank you very much.
People being very patient.
You guys don't have a catch, I mean, a couple things.
I'm patient.
So, the last is that Thomas and Elizabeth, all be two forty-seven North Mabbetsoe Road. This is an application to, for site plan approval in connection with a project to add new living space above a garage. So the ZBA has already granted the variances and special permit conditions on our site plan. So, you just say, for the ruins, design change.
That's it.
Yes, Bill's there, parents.
You don't live near him, though, right?
I don't, I live on South Road.
I live right there, though.
She lives right there, she and I are the South Road contingent.
Right.
Oh, you do? So it's Hitchcock, I'm saying, right?
So, this is, um, this is what it looks like directly. So it's, it's, just a small old house, okay.
Is that from the road, the top pictures that they can hold, or not? That's like the front?
Yeah, through the front, this is, so this is the front.
Yeah.
You can see that they have like a little flat roof garage. So they want- Then this is from the back, I see.
Yeah.
Okay, so, what they wanna do is, you see this, this is the story we have? They take this roof line, and pull it over to the top of the garage. And then in that attic space, move the bedroom from downstairs, the bathroom from downstairs to the upstairs. But then, we needed to have a special permit and a site plan approval, because technically, this is only on point nine-nine acres. So it's not exactly perfect conditions for even doing that, little addition there on top. So we're not moving any of the proportions at all, it's just going up. Just, technically, really, it's-
It's only point nine-nine acres, it's a little lot, in the middle of ten acres on it.
Yeah, that's true. You would never, this picture, so.
It is the ceiling. I think this is a big long, across the street, they have a big farm.
Yeah, what's, what's the frontage, the frontage width there? Like only a hundred feet or so?
Yeah.
It goes long, and the backyard is really deep.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's a cute little place, I think it's actually more practical, it's better look, to have the roof.
So, that roof is gonna be pitched above that, and so people are gonna be, the living area is gonna be reduced, 'cause it's a pitched roof.
That's true, but you, we're gonna put dormers.
Okay, you're gonna have dormers.
Just like they have here, see?
Right, so you're not raising, you're not raising, you're not adding a certain second story and that pitched roof above that.
It's only a story, it's gonna stay, that, because it would look ridiculous.
Yeah, you're extending the roof line.
This is gonna, just bring that roof line straight across. They have a little, two little kids, and then one little boy, and they don't care. But, you know, as they get bigger, you know, a little more space. So these are just my, just my sketches that I hate, the ZBA. Basically, it's basically what you see.
Right.
This part, this, this, right now, you don't see-
Right, it's cut off there, and you can send it over.
Look, I mean, it's not, it wasn't, I don't know why they did that, but, you know, when those people, they're, they're sort of practical sometimes, and they just do what they need, you know? And that's what they, it sounds like an improvement, and it doesn't, you're not gonna disrupt the soil, or-
No.
No, not gonna go-
And the reason you had to go through the ZBA and all that, 'cause it's a non-conforming law.
Exactly. Yeah, because it's ten acres on it.
And the building inspector wouldn't give you a building permit.
No, they denied it.
Yeah.
And we also have, I sent out letters to-
To the neighbors.
Twice.
I don't know why they would.
Yeah, I don't think it's, definitely, I think it's in the best interest of the neighborhood.
Yeah, it's nice.
Okay.
So that's my story.
It's adding a bathroom onto the second-
Actually, we're relocating the bathroom downstairs, upstairs, and then the downstairs will say, will say a powdering. It's gonna be a powdering, the tub's gonna come out. So, so right now, they, their bed, their master bedroom is downstairs, it's really like a dining room. And then there's a full-size bathroom, that's gonna go upstairs. And then the downstairs bathroom is just gonna be a powdering, they're gonna take, get rid of the shower and the, and the tub, and then that's gonna be the dining room.
It's the strip that you did.
But this whole house, I think it's fourteen hundred feet. It's small.
That's for the additions, or?
No, without the additions, only another one, three hundred and fifty-two square feet, it's not much.
I know.
Once you throw in a couple dormers, you got a little bit of height, and even the upstairs are not even a tub, it's a-
You're gonna have a bed, a bed in there, that's it, I mean, not much in there.
There's not much, no. But it's, it's useful space, and they really, they don't want, they, they can't, you know, outside of that parameter, so it's not, it's not that.
Alicia, comments?
One of our main comments is getting higher beyond what exactly was, I think, we have it now, there's going to be in the bedroom. And a basement, downstairs bathroom, it's gonna be converted to a half-bath. So I guess net is adding a half-bath. And there's a couple of things about completely filling out the application, that-
Was that done?
I haven't received an updated one that has the written narrative of discussion.
I did it, and I emailed.
It's in the file.
Okay. But I also have one, I'm gonna-
That's, that's done. They wanted me to add more, right?
Are you technically adding a bedroom then? Or you're moving a bedroom?
Was that sent out today?
So you don't have to-
Sorry, there were some emails I didn't get to.
This is the file, do you wanna see it?
It's five, it's five hundred gallons, I think, which is good enough for up to a four-bedroom.
I don't know that.
Yeah, well, they, I-
I'm not adding, but, no, we're not.
It's almost like adding bedroom for the second, doesn't affect the second.
Right, so it's three, it's staying three-bedroom. They're gonna just turn that present to dining room.
Okay.
We interest you in a public hearing?
I think we, we have to have one, because we have to get the-
You gave me hurl.
Thirty days, because they are within a form, they are within the county road. They get around that, you can't, you can't waive that.
Oh, can't waive that.
And I even know about the EAF form, was that done?
I did, I think, yeah, I did that, too.
Oh, you did that?
I did, yeah.
Yeah, and it shouldn't undo the later process, because you can schedule a public hearing, you could still potentially control the public hearing that evening.
Yeah, we do that quite often, so.
We have to wait for the county anyway.
Yeah, we have to wait for the county, there's no reason here to wait. Oh, public hearing, I don't see, but I just wanna see the-
It's alright, let's one more month, if they're, they're not that.
Just because you are within the county road and- So I have the, I see a new ag statement, but, um-
It's a sign?
Sign, it's like electronically signed, I guess.
Yeah, they're down. Every public information is in there that I got that I received. Yeah, that's yesterday, and then today I sent you.
So here's the EAF. Have you seen the EAF? You said you had an EAF.
I believe I have seen that.
Oh, you have?
No, um, I'm not seeing it.
Kim, I might need your guidance here, so I have what is marked as an original planning board application. I don't know what that means, exactly.
That's the original one, that they handed in, and then these are the copies on the bottom.
So where's the new one that they, the updated one?
This is all I have.
Yeah.
What's in here?
Oh, I thought you said, said you updated it.
I did, I did, because they wanted me to, I didn't, I sent it in, but. This is all that was in the email.
Oh, she says this is what she got.
Yeah, I got that, and then I sent them, um, this also.
Questions like that just you missed, that you haven't answered, I don't know. There's a lot of that throughout the application. So this, all the questions need to be answered, you know, is it within a hundred feet of this, or not? Do you want me to just do anything else?
Not really, 'cause I won't be able to really follow it, but we need, you know, and like, there's all these things, you can fill in half the boxes, you really need to go through and make sure that the whole application is complete.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I just went down his list before I got.
Yeah, just go through it again and, and we submit it tomorrow with those questions answered.
Okay.
That'd be helpful.
Um, you, did you need this?
No. Comment, that one we have, that one.
Can you make a copy of this and give it to Alicia's EAF form?
Okay. Um, so septic system, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We think that's.
They're trading bed, bedroom zones.
Uh, wet ones are on site, but far enough away. We need county referrals because it's within five hundred feet of state roads and a farm operator.
So I, I did it for their property, but this has other properties. My understanding now.
I'm just looking at.
No, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, because I added on.
Just added on other ones.
No, you're right, you're right, that, now you have a. And this is just documents.
That's just documents, yeah.
But you should mark what documents are included and.
Onto, onto this.
If I looked at it more carefully, I might agree with you, there was, but the first round, I know there were a lot of questions missing and, uh. So it, it, maybe it just.
I'll double it now, but, yeah. And they're not, nobody else is moving into the house, they're not.
No.
It's, it's the same four year way, they're not, same, same family and. They, um, they train horses, so part of their years up here working with horses and then, and then years.
And then two, they've just had two children in the last couple of years, and so it was, yeah, a fit for them, but now they need just a little more space.
They got a three-year-old and like a six or seven-year-old.
Oh, you know, people.
I do, well, yes, I do. Uh, I have a note that the survey was not that clear and we need to decide whether we're gonna get. That was not the first one today.
Uh, I think sometimes when you just scan it, when I scanned it, it, I, I scanned the faulty copy and it wasn't that great. So I, that's why we just redid this.
So if we are gonna sign this, you know, agree that this is something we're gonna use, it needs to have the signature.
Yeah, I did.
Is that okay? I couldn't write that. As long as that's the verbiage that.
Okay.
That we require, that.
I think this is what.
Yeah, that's, that's fine then, okay.
Okay, that's.
So you need four of these, right?
Yes, we will.
So I have to drop off the one we got.
Yes.
Um, so I've just gone through my list. Anything else that I'm forgetting? Any other comments?
Roll it, roll it.
Roll it.
Yeah, because the creases will show when you top you.
Yeah. So, uh, this is a type-two action, again requiring no environmental review. Can I get a motion to classify this type-two?
Still moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
So, um. Are you ready to put it on for a public hearing? Are you okay with submission? I mean, at this point, it corrected most of the.
Yeah, you're gonna get that back tomorrow.
Yeah.
And I'll make sure the comments.
Great, okay. Um, is the file complete, Cam?
No. No, I understand you that. That's.
Yeah.
Can I just drop off and plus?
That, that, those were outstanding, I just got that one.
What do you? So, I don't know everything about this. Um, so this is for the ZBA?
I don't.
Does it say zoning on it?
It says zoning, yeah, it's.
That's it then.
So they had, so, we gave you money for the zoning board meeting for S-Gro.
Okay, so what happened was, okay.
Remember, because I asked a couple times how, if there was a balance.
Okay. I don't know anything about that. All I know is that this was outstanding from whenever those dates are there. It was handed to me. I knew that you were gonna be at the meeting today. I asked Susan if it was all right to bring it, and she said yes. So that's why I was handed to me. Okay, this, the meeting of, what you just paid was for planning.
Right, but, but I, I've been asking about this just because I've just tried to be respectful to these folks if there's additional, but I mean, it's fine. It's not a problem, I just unaware of it.
Yeah, um, I, I don't know how the, this works, but I know we're not, you know, we're really supposed to have these things paid before you're on the agenda for the next month. So we, what we can do is vote to, uh, set up a public hearing for next month. Um, subject to these being paid.
Sure.
You know, by.
I'll bring that tomorrow too.
So, uh, we just.
Yeah, no problem.
Just mark the, uh, number down and then that's, that's her form, so. Okay. So, um. Oh, we have a county referral too.
Did, did you actually vote on that? Or, I, I can't remember if you voted or got the first and second and then asked. I just wanna make sure there's.
On the seeker?
On the, uh, no.
I think we did. We didn't do that yet. First, I'm doing a county referral.
Got it.
Yeah.
The only thing, the only thing we did so far was seeker.
Exactly, yeah. I, I have my little notes, otherwise I forget.
She, she went out, she doesn't know, I made the motion and who seconded it?
Uh, Richard. I have Eric and Richard, no, for seeker, Eric.
Oh, and then I seconded, okay.
All right, so Richard seconded.
Yeah.
And I was for a seeker?
Yes.
And you?
Okay. So, uh, I need a motion to refer it to the county. So move.
Second. Second.
Richard, all in favor?
All right.
Right. Thank you so much.
So now we need a motion to put the matter on for a public hearing for next month, that's NACAN. Um, pending payment, subject to you paying the, the balance due, uh, by the end of the week, we'll say. Okay, um, can I get a motion put on? So move.
Second.
Oh, Richard, all in favor?
Right.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So I just wanted to take a minute to bring up the clear subject. Because originally, we were gonna have it on the agenda. Uh, wanted to mention that the application, as we all know, was withdrawn. And that, my understanding is, from speaking with Kyle at Van de Water, that that means that the meg dash that we adopted is void.
Right.
Goes away and it doesn't mean anything, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Uh, and any new application by the clear starts the whole seeker process again. We're not, we don't go back to the beginning.
Right, it's a new application.
It's a whole new application. I just wanted to kind of say that on the record and have it out there.
They requested that in their correspondence.
Somebody did.
Yeah.
Somebody did. Um, and now, you know, was that?
The only thing we questioned was whether they had to pay the fees again or can.
Oh, request it, I'm sorry, you're right.
That was, uh.
Yes.
When we, we, we all decided that they can let the fees right, right, and then.
Um, and the next thing is just, I had sent out a, an email about the hospitality law, the implications to that. Um, and mostly I thought they did a pretty good job on incorporating a lot of the things we talked about. That was my general thought. And my other thought was that they did a really good job of separating out the reusable, reuse, whatever it's called, I can't think of it right now. Versus a regular, adaptive reuse versus an inn. And that now they're very separate categories, and if you want to be adaptive reuse, you're really stuck to a specific thing. You can't kind of.
You're stuck in a square footage.
Very strict about that.
The existing footprint.
Existing footprint.
So that was my, my.
Makes it difficult.
That was my main, you know, there are little, you know, things here and there, but my main substantive input would be, um, I understand that. There's concern and that people wanna limit and make sure that, you know, we're not changing the feel of things, um. And the, you know, and the ruralness of, of our area. But my concern is, we also want to motivate people to reuse these historic, existing, the existing structures that are there. We want, we want them to use those and to restore them, not just tear them down and. Or, or build somewhere else where they just sit and rot and then nobody wants to, to deal with what's left. Um, my concern is that it, it is quite prohibitive for the adaptive reuse inn. Um, and they have it in like, uh, eight A on page four of that first document. So there should be no more than twenty guest rooms in any inn, and you, it, it can, you only qualify for the adaptive reuse inn if you. Stay within the exact footprint of the existing, you know, reusable building kind of thing. And I, and I, I really feel like people aren't gonna do it then.
No, they'll lock it down.
That's my concern. They, they, they'll say, fine then, and they'll, if we don't allow them, it maybe only has a room for eight, you know, eight rooms or something. And they can't go a little outside of that footprint, or they can't add on to it. And with them. They absolutely lose the motivation of reusing that building because it's much cheaper to just tear it down and build something new. That's my worry.
Yeah, the condo inn, that I don't believe has enough room to put twenty rooms in, the existing one. And the, and the motel has twelve or thirteen rooms, so both of those can't qualify for adaptive reuse.
Although I once rented out the whole, mostly the whole thing.
You want to get the twenty rooms.
Yeah.
You can't.
The rooms in the cottonwood are ridiculously large.
Yes, they are. They're tubs and stuff, yeah.
It's crazy, I don't know what they were thinking about them, but rented it out for college students, ones, and they, you could have put ten kids in a row. You know, they, those rooms could be divided into two rooms.
Yeah, that's probably true, yes.
They might be able to make more rooms out of that hotel without expanding the footprint. But it is very limiting.
But, I mean, but, don't we have an adaptive reuse law outside of the hospitality district?
I'm not.
Because I guess my, my, because I, I agree with you. I wonder if it matters for this district relative to, you know, that, that, I guess that's. And I don't know the answer to that.
This was about this, this hospitality district that you're forming statues, areas. Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm curious, I just can't, I can't seem to.
I think I kind of bent over too much in one direction in this.
I don't think they, they envisioned how they were, that what they're stating would affect the actual buildings that are in question, like the cottonwood and, uh, you know, and the. And cottonwood motel, um.
But that's hard to believe.
If you wanted to adapt, use them, adaptively reuse them, it'd be very difficult. And therefore the new owners may just demolish them and build something else.
So they don't have, they're not bound by.
Yeah, and they'll be, they'll be limited to twenty rooms.
And, and more disturbing to the environment, to the, to the neighbors, to everything else, and they'll be building something.
It could look like a Holiday Inn.
It could look like that.
I think they should allow, allow, to motivate people to reuse buildings and to, and to, you know, be more sustainable and keep the look of our area. If they could add on the extra two rooms to get to twenty, or the extra five rooms to get to twenty, or whatever is, some percentage of the footprint. And still qualify. I think that that is reasonable. To make, to force them into the exact footprint that is existing, I think is unreasonable and people are not. They're gonna do the opposite of what we want, which is to reuse these buildings.
Small set, yeah.
We want people to reuse the buildings. That's the whole point of going with the name of adaptive reuse and then making all these rules about it. Is that we want people to do this, but the way they're being so restrictive with it, people aren't gonna do it, they're gonna tan them. It, it's just so restricted that they can't go any bit outside of the original footprint. Even to put on decking, to put on covered porches, to put on things that people, that make it, you know, nice to use, won't be able to do any of that.
Yeah. I wonder if this was a reaction to a lot of the input that, that committee got after the first iteration where it seemed like. Maybe they could do more than was wanted with these older buildings. And then they just, they clamped down it and.
I think, I think they made it unreasonable and they've now demotivated people from reducing.
They didn't think about the.
About the alternative.
So in.
My feedback to them.
It's really the feedback.
And that's on page four of that first document, eight A.
They're gonna have a public hearing on the eleventh on this.
Yes, so I'm gonna get these comments into Leslie this week. That's what I kinda wanted to talk about there, so.
Yeah, they specifically asked for our feedback in advance of that, though.
Yeah. Um.
Is there language that can be applying this? Is there language that can apply to existing buildings that, you know, we can, something about historic structures or existing buildings? Is there something where we can, we can, uh, put language that addresses that particular concern?
Well, they already put language to address that particular concern, saying you absolutely will not. That's what it says, you can't, you cannot.
The original draft of this said that if they were adaptively reusing a building, we would have the ability to allow them to do extra rooms.
Got it.
To, uh, to, rather than just be limited to the twenty, they might be able to get another ten or twenty if they were reusing a building.
And now they can't, now they can't, now they can't even get to twenty if it doesn't fit in the existing footprint.
They can't do anything with the old building. They just have to do, make rooms inside of it.
I think it's gonna completely demotivate anyone from using buildings.
It's gonna backfire.
Very restrictive.
Totally backfire. I'm just curious what else, what the rest of the code says about adaptive reuse, because it may, it may say what we want it. It may, there may already be language about the purpose behind adaptive reuse.
That would consider, you might be right, and, and I'll take a look too, but. If you're gonna adopt a law that specifically speaks to these uses, that's legally, that's gonna, but even if there's something elsewhere in the code on adaptive reuses. It's gonna be perceived that the more restrictive language will apply. So I do think it's, if, if what you're suggesting is that maybe we, we pilfer some language from the other provision and make it part of this.
No.
Or even the compromise between the original and what they've now proposed could be, as you said, some sort of percentage increase that's within your discretion or something along those lines.
Like I might, as a developer, might be happy to go into old historic building and then add on some rooms or add on porch or add.
Yeah, it's usually an.
But then, but I'm fully using that old footprint and making it better and.
I'm, I'm certainly just.
Found the words.
I think when they, we hold them to that original footprint, you are not gonna be motivated to, to take on, to take that on.
Yeah, I, I've been in council, I'm a private, I'm a public side of that kind of issue, I think you're right.
This is what we would want.
It's just not worth, they'll want to, they, they love to use these old buildings, but they can't, but they're just, they're not gonna do it.
Our whole area is wanting them to do that. That was what the community said when we asked for feedback, is we want to keep the feel.
Stand for it. I think it's gonna be.
I think it's so restrictive that we're gonna demotivate them to do what we want.
Plan, application.
There is an adaptive use. Well, the code already has an adaptive use section.
It talks about what you're talking about, which is the courage, this is what, this is.
But the new, the new documents completely disallow it.
Yeah, I, that's, I'm, I, it, I'm, I guess what I'm suggesting is that what is already there may be better than what's been put in place, right? That they've now reinvented the wheel and undermined the very purpose of what we're trying to accomplish. And they have just been.
We're the, we're the primary people who will use this.
Yes.
And apply it as the planning board.
People that come before us.
And it really ties our hands, uh, we.
No, we won't be able to do anything with them.
No discretion on, on that, on that particular situation.
Yeah. So that would be my main feedback is on the eight A, I think it's page four of that first document, is it, um.
And then I had had a word concern that they just, I mentioned it in the first draft and they, I think they kind of made it worse. And it was about, um. They use words requirements and factors to be considered, and well, it can't really be both. It's just, that's not how, oh, there it is. Um, in determining whether special permits run in within the HOS district may be approved, the planning board shall consider the following relevant requirements. And factors, and in addition to the criteria general, generally applicable to special permits, it's typo there anyway. But if something is either a factor to be considered or a requirement, I don't think you can be both. And I think they need to strike the word requirements and make it the, that we shall consider the following relevant factors.
Whatever's relevant for this particular.
Yeah, we'll consider those factors.
And we'll make a resolution stating what.
We changed, I forgot to take that out.
Yeah, maybe, but, so that's a change, that annoys me.
Yep.
Um, and I, what else?
Oh, there's that section four ahead.
Yes, what was the word?
The, the land conservancy district, it's referring to the land conservancy district. And suggesting that there hasn't been an adoption of a map to wetlands and water.
It references a land conservation district or land conservation zone, which doesn't exist anymore, hasn't existed in that code for ages.
Yep.
And, and a reference to it becoming obsolete after the adoption of this, of the hospitality law.
It's already obsolete.
We travel back in time. It just, who knows how this is in this law?
I don't, I don't remember seeing that before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe somebody cut and pasted and they, and they didn't see that part. Yeah. It should be struck.
So they're adding a lot of messy stuff that is going, there's supposed to be cleaning up the wall, but there's a lot of messy stuff that's getting added that.
I think, let's recommend they take that out.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll do that.
Did our original comments, I mean, our original comments on adaptive reuse, we should just suggest, I don't remember what they were, but if they, if they cover what we were talking about, then we should just.
I'll go back and look at that.
Suggest that they adopt that.
I'll draft up an email that I'll send to Leslie with our comments, and I'll send it to you first and tell me if I missed anything. How about that? Okay.
Hmm.
Um, anything else on this? No. So can I get a motion to close the meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Which is behind every motion.
Are you going to be a lander hotel on twenty-two in Kopeck?
Thank you.
Oh, I've seen it.
Yeah, they converted that into a really nice job. They did the kind of, you're talking about, I think.
Yeah.
Fortunes.
And, and you know, I see people using it.